To ask for a motion to return to open session, please.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And Shannon is...
Trying to get Shannon on right now.
Shannon Moser will be joining us electronically. David Quick- Peter Quigley is absent. So... The next item on the agenda is the approval of our minutes from November 6th meeting. Do you have any information you want to amend?
Just more of a procedural question. So, on the, on item seven where under correspondence and other comments and issues for consideration at future meetings, I just note that we had some discussion, in particular Peter had some discussion around the budget and the operating budget, and that's not memorialized here. So I don't know if it's supposed to be, or if that's covered tonight in the discussion. Because if like, if I didn't know any better and I just read this, I would think that, you know, we looked at Budget A, Budget B, and everything was sort of airtight and no one had any, any comment on it.
Okay. So Suzanne, maybe we could add a line to that section of the minutes saying there was general discussion of the budget proposal?
And the correspondence thought?
No, in the...
In the discussion.
In the discussion.
The discussion.
Yeah, after you described the presentation, then the school committee members had a general discussion. Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
Other than that, I didn't have any.
Okay. Kelly? Okay, so...
Kelly, I'm sorry to interrupt. Would you mind texting Shannon, just have her check her Gmail, because I sent her a thing for the, for the video conference?
So, could I then have a motion to approve the minutes of November 6th, 2019?
Motion to approve minutes of November 6th, 2019?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay. Now we move to a public comment. So are there any members of the public who would like to make comments to the school committee? Okay. Would you, have you signed? She needs to put her name there, right? And then we'd be happy to hear from you. Yeah, yeah. Yeah. Great, so please have a seat at one of these microphones.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm Tracy Schwartz.
Okay.
I have a daughter, Christy Schwartz, at Alden in the fourth grade.
Okay.
And I'm an LICSW, just for our background with understanding some of the safety issues that were of most concern to me. I do appreciate the communication and attempt of communication. I did send a letter to Dr. Antonucci and an email. So there's been a number of people that I've been in conversation with as far as parents and concerns, and I'm here as a representative of some of them. One of my biggest concerns was the timing of the email. I'm understanding that the information that was gathered regarding the most recent safety threat, I said, in essence, was sent out about 9:20 in the morning, that's my understanding, and the information was gathered the previous night. And that's after all the children have been back on the bus. And to us, many of us that I represent, it felt very much like we were not given an opportunity to make a choice, that the school committee and whoever the powers be were the ones that chose for the parents what the decision would be with regarding the attendance of children. And that felt very unsafe to us and felt very, um... Like, you know, we have a fundamental right as parents to now and make choices for our children and to prepare our children for what they're about to be exposed to with the increased presence of police and understand those actions are important and necessary. We would like an opportunity to be able to talk to our children if there are going to be increased presence of police on campus and be able to have that conversation before they go to school. So that was the number one thing that I hear, I'm here to represent.
Okay.
And I would like to know, I posted that in the email, I would like to know how this works with the committee in terms of getting back to us as a community of parents. How do we get information back as far as this is an action plan that we would like to see action on? And is there any commitment from the committee or the powers that be to do a better job of communicating sooner before children return to school? What would actually have, like, what can we do as an action item around that?
Well, as committee, school committee is really a governing body rather than management of the school district. So those types of questions are best directed to Dr. Antonucci, so I'm gonna let you...
Yeah, I can't make any guarantees, but I can say is every, every situation is unique and we make the best decision that we can based on the information we have at the time. And the other night, the decision was made not to send anything out until the following morning.
Can you give me an understanding one about that?
Do you want to, just let me finish for a second. So I just will say, I stand, I stand by that decision, I do appreciate your feedback. And we're very reflective and we've done a lot of debriefing today about that, but every situation is very unique. And as I responded to your email, of course, and, you know, there was no ambiguity in our message, there was no threat to students, it was a normal school day yesterday. And so I appreciate your concerns, but I can't give you any promises for the future. It'll be a case-by-case decision.
Can you give me any understanding around if information is gathered? I understand every case is, you know, case-by-case, I get that. I get that there are circumstances that I'm not privileged to know and that we as parents aren't privileged to know. I'm wondering if there was a way, though, to give us, you know, some sort of indication before the morning?
I'm not going to engage in a hypothetical. I just, it's a case-by-case decision. We made a decision the other night, we stand by it, and I, like I said, I appreciate your feedback, but that's all I have to say about it. I'd be, I'd be lying to you if I could make, try to give you a false promise for the future, so.
Okay, well, my, your response is disappointing to me. I'll have to let you know, I'm on record of that. I'm not satisfied as a parent. Okay? So that's one. Two is, I understand, and I think I've, you know, kind of gathered my thoughts around that with the, as a mental health provider and, you know, with all the events that occur in today's environment, there would, it would be nice to have some kind of reassurance that proper channels were taken as far as mental health evaluation, or if there was anything like that involved, that you took the proper channels for, with the proper people that had the...
Well, as I said in the email, Ms. Schwartz, you're a licensed social worker, so you, you understand student privacy rights. But suffice it to say that we followed, we follow all appropriate channels and laws.
Does that include mental health evaluations?
Like I said, you know student privacy rights, I'm not going to speak anymore about that. We feel very confident in our response, it was a collaborative effort. We have a big team of professionals who are well-trained and prepared to respond to these things, and I'm not going to give any more information about that. You, you know that as a licensed social worker, that I'm not able to do that.
I understand.
Student priv- I want to say, student privacy laws are not gray.
Are what?
They are black and white.
Mm-hmm.
And so, and I feel bad that people are frustrated, but we will never, ever violate students' privacy rights or their civil rights for that matter. In this case, we won't ever.
I understand that. And the piece of the, as far as a safe public safety issue is the reassurance to parents, of course, that everything is being done to keep the children safe. The last piece is the hallways that make the, and I put this in the email, this is no surprise. I mean, I put all the concerns in an email, so I didn't come here to blindside anybody. I came here to be cooperative and trying to get some kind of reassurance back to the people that I'm involved with and other parents. And the, the open school of the connection of the high school to the middle school to Alden and the younger kids, it would seem that the younger kids would be more vulnerable to perhaps, you know, the older kids, as they get older, have more issues as they get older perhaps, or are more dangerous as they get older, in terms of what they would actually accomplish. If we can say like a third grade, a second grader, a third grader, a fourth grader is less likely to be of any kind of danger perhaps as an older child would be. That's kind of our rationale. And I'm wondering, is there a way to make the safes, the rooms segregated and closed more? So that, like the, especially with Alden School from the middle school to the high school, so that there is more containment? And if, is there anything that that could be done for higher security purposes?
Yeah, we reviewed those options, actually in the last couple of years. And the short answer is no, there's really not a viable solution right now to block, to block that off. We actually went as far as getting estimates and plans and just, there's some egress issues that don't allow us to wall, to wall up Alden from, from basically the PAC lobby area. So it's something we, you know, we'd love to do long-term, but at this point, there's no, there's no viable solution to close that off.
What about this short-term solution? You do have doors right there in front of the principal's office. I know that the cafeteria wouldn't include that, but at least through the day that those doors would be closed and locked and that the people passing in and out for lunch, I know is not covered, but at least throughout the day, those doors would be locked.
Yeah, there's a lot of student traffic from the middle school and high school into the PAC area. So it's again, something we've looked at.
But it's only those doors right outside, I'm talking about the doors to Alden specifically. Those two doors in front of the principal's office, there's doors that go into Alden and shut off that you come in. Do you know what I'm talking about?
No, I don't.
Right outside the office.
Right outside the office, there's two.
You take a left. And you're gonna exit towards the cafeteria and there are doors there.
I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just off on, you know what, do it.
I think that all of our doors are locked in the schools and we have a safety plan that we review every year with the...
That's not the question, no.
But I think that we wouldn't ever have our Alden students in danger. Everything is locked and yesterday there was not a safety risk, which is why this is a separate conversation.
Because you have the, you have the middle school people and the high school people that can flow at any time into PAC and I understand that. The question that I'm bringing up is that the two doors outside, she knows what I'm talking about.
Which ones, Kelly?
The two doors that are right outside the principal's office from, from...
Are you talking the office doors?
Whitaker's.
Right before the office doors, there are two doors to enter the lobby. The office will be on your left, you come in.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
And then there are two over.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I don't know, I, it's something we can certainly consider. I don't think, there's a lot of, there's a lot of student traffic. I mean, there's just a billing operation. You can't completely shut down billing operations by locking those doors.
What do you mean billing operations?
Well, just, I mean, we have to function, we have to function in the school building and we have a lot of, a lot of student traffic in and out of those doors all day. I'd have to look into it, I'm not going to get into a big discussion about that tonight, but certainly we are constantly looking at our facilities. We have a great partnership with the Duxbury Police Department. Our facilities manager is very focused on school safety and security. We've made a lot of investments in the last couple of years, so I do...
I think that that is a pretty simple solution and I'm glad that you're willing to consider it and I would consider that one thing at least, a place in which I feel like there's some movement to follow up and have, I'd appreciate some kind of follow-up on that.
Well, I'll take it under advisement, I can't guarantee a follow-up. I mean, it's something I think we'll consider as part of our safety plan.
What can you give me? What can you give me?
I have nothing else to add tonight, yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say...
That's disappointing.
I, we were copied in on your letter, I think you sent it to all of us and I do appreciate the tone of your letter.
Okay, thank you.
So thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, great. So, Dr. Antonucci, you have report for school comment?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass, actually.
Okay. Dr. Klingeman?
Yes, I have some information I'd like to share tonight about our Title I program. And so, Dr. Antonucci's gonna put just a couple of brief slides up on the screen for me. This is some information that I shared at the beginning of the school year with Alden and Chandler parents at open house nights, but I just wanted to share it with you because the procedures are a little bit different this year and some parents had some questions about it. So I thought I'd take the opportunity to just share a little bit more about our, our district Title I program. So, as we've talked about before, we receive federal funds under Title I and these funds are intended to ensure that all children meet challenging state academic standards under the Every Student Succeeds Act. And so, as part of the acceptance of these funds, we are mandated to provide family outreach and engagement about this funding every year. And more recently than the open house nights, families may have received notification that their children have become eligible for intervention support and that's a change this year. We hadn't been notifying parents if their children would be participating in intervention programs. So that's a little bit new to people. So, if you can press the other button there. So, Title I is Part A of the federal Every Student Succeeds Act, which provides financial assistance to districts and schools to help ensure that all children meet challenging state academic standards. And these funds are based primarily on census poverty estimates and the cost of education in each state. So I wanted to make really clear tonight that the funding we receive is based on estimates of poverty in Duxbury and the students that are working in the Title I program in no way are identified as falling in that poverty, within that poverty estimate, any student is eligible to receive Title I services. It's based on academic need and that is, that is it. So, our designated Title I schools are Alden and Chandler because we intend to provide early intervention to our youngest students in reading and math. This year, we received $86,790 in Title I and we are responsible to make sure that we are following all the procedures that are mandated through Title I and we are being audited this year, so they do keep track of districts doing everything that we are supposed to be doing as, as people that receive these funds. So you can send that on to the next slide.
Do you mind if I ask that?
Absolutely.
The decision to designate Alden and Chandler as the Title I recipients, is that... It sounded like that was a strategic decision rather than a function of the limit of money.
It's a strategic decision and we only have one elementary school for K through 2 and 1 for 3, 4, and 5. If we had multiple elementary schools in the district, we would likely base it on the highest number of students that would be in that at-risk group.
Right.
And we are eligible to use some funds at the middle school and high school level as we see fit, but we've made a decision to target our youngest students and try to get the strongest base possible of reading and math before they advance. That doesn't mean that we don't also want to provide intervention for our middle and high school students and that's a district initiative, that's part of our strategic plan, but it is strategic. That's correct.
Okay.
So how do we spend our Title I allotment? We use programs that you, many parents are familiar with. We use Lexia Learning as a digital program, Ames Web Benchmark and Progress Monitoring Testing, which all students participate in, it's not just students that are at risk. This year, we added iReady Math Assessment at Chandler. Alden School, we use Star Reading and Math. Alden, we use Accelerated Reader. And we also purchase supplemental instructional resources as well as the math tutor salaries. So for a long time, I think Duxbury students have been participating in these interventions as part of our general education program and families may not have realized that where, where these programs are being funded is through Title I. And we, because we're a targeted assistance school district, can't run a school-wide program. So we need to basically have rank order of our students that are highest at risk and be able to document the interventions that we're purchasing through Title I that are being provided to our most at-risk students. And as part of the targeted assistance, we must supplement, not supplant. And what that means, we must build upon district resources and interventions that are above and beyond what we'd be purchasing through our operating budget. How do we determine who qualifies for Title I? So, we have several different ways that we do this. We always have classroom teacher recommendation, teachers know the students best, but on top of classroom teacher recommendation, we use common assessment results, the results of benchmark assessments, which I had listed on the other page, Ames Web, iReady, Star. When we have MCAS information available for students in grades four and five, we use that. And then all that information is compiled and we have a, a system where we can take all of the results and then we can identify which students are highest at risk and be able to provide the most intensive intervention for those students. And so, the intervention looks a little bit different depending on the student performance.
Okay. I'll send it on.
So this is the part that's a little bit different. So this year, if students were determined to, that they require some additional intervention, and those interventions can look like they might just be working with the Lexia program in their general classroom setting, on their own, under their classroom teacher's direction, they could be receiving extra math help from a Title I math tutor or they could be leaving the classroom to work with a reading specialist. So whatever the intervention, each of the parents of students that were recommended for that intervention were sent a letter, which is different this year. So we had some parents that may not have been able to attend the open house event, so they were a little bit surprised at times when they received the letter. Also, along with that letter, Title I districts are, we need to send a parent compact with that letter and that just shows that it needs to be a partnership between school and home in order for students to make the maximum progress. So just things that our Duxbury parents know, that they need to be reading to their children, they need to be monitoring homework and also seeking out additional support and resources from the school, ensuring that the students are making good progress. Students that qualify for intervention at the beginning of the year may not need it throughout the entire year. They may, at the beginning of the year, have some deficit areas that are addressed through intervention and then when we progress monitor the students later in the year, they may not require that service any longer. And so parents would be informed if their child is no longer receiving extra support in any of the ways that we had mentioned, which is the Lexia, the small group support from reading specialist or math tutors. And so students can move in and out of the program throughout the year. And again, this program may be based on census data for our poverty, poverty level, but any student in Duxbury qualifies for this support. So it's nothing, this is open to all students, it always has been and nothing changed this year, but we just, we just are compelled to let families know about this funding and how we spend it. So that's about it. Thank you.
This is Blake. So, we are currently in the process of working with the Spyglass Group, which is a cost consulting firm who will be performing an audit on our telecom invoices. And by audit, they are performing a thorough review of our invoices to see if there are potentially any mistakes or overcharges that we're currently paying for our internet services, for our wireless and for our telephone bills. So it's similar in nature to the transportation audit that we undertook last year. We're utilizing this outside source that has some very specific expertise to help make sure that our expenses are necessary and reasonable and to help identify some areas of cost savings. And as I've mentioned previously, we're also in the process of converting from our existing payroll system to a new payroll system, which is Harper's. And this is a project that we're working on with the town as well. And our first training session on the new payroll system will take place tomorrow. And we are anticipating that we'll run two parallel payroll cycles in December and then we plan on having a go-live date in January.
Great. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Tanner, would you like to...
All right, I'll speak up. So, first thing I have is with Chandler School, the preschool and kindergarten students participated in their first Helping Hands event of the year and that was the Thanksgiving Food Drive.
Give me your mic.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Yeah, awesome. Helping Hands Food Drive. And during this community event, students donated non-perishables through the interfaith council and made placemats, so, for the Duxbury Senior Center for their Thanksgiving meal. Over at Alden, the first thing we have is that Alden has a Community Readers Day on Thursday, November 21st, and they're having over 20 community members come in to read to the kids. And the Kids Care will be collecting non-perishable foods next week to donate to food banks around here to, and for the Duxbury seniors. Over at the middle school, Ms. Coin met with students from each grade to discuss the successes of Term One and to set some goals for Term Two. And these were a great opportunity for the grade to get together and celebrate and reflect and talk about Term Two, what they're gonna do, what worked and everything. And a group of teachers had the opportunity to celebrate World Kindness Day in the middle school and there was actually, like, in front of the cafeteria, there's this big poster, kindness, and people could stand in the eye and you could post on Instagram or make just kindness chains in Main Street. So I think those are up now, check those out. And then at the high school, first thing I have is senior class plays this weekend, 7 to 10. So that's a little different from just a normal drama event. It's like any senior who's, hasn't done acting before has the opportunity to do it. So that should be fun, that's Saturday and Sunday at 10. I have one line, I've never acted before. So that should be fun.
Give us a little kind of pretzel person.
Still working on it.
These pretzels are making me thirsty.
The parent teacher conferences were last week and there's over 550 conferences scheduled. The National Honor Society is doing a Savers Drive, that's all throughout the week. And then Friday, we'll be bringing those up to Savers. And the senior class breakfast in the yearbook, so prolatives will be given out and that's on Wednesday, next Wednesday, it's a half-day. So we'll get a chance to meet, give those out. That'll be fun. Yeah. And also Powder Puff was scheduled for tomorrow. I just got a text walking in that it's, football now is a meeting, so that is to be determined. But that's like the junior and senior girls playing football against each other. And tomorrow is the first, or the second of day of our Balance Initiative, so A for appreciation. So we're gonna have some cool things out, I don't want to spoil anything, but that's what I have.
Tanner mentioned this banner at the middle school and I just threw it up on the screen here. And so it's, the, the I is blank, right? So sort of be the I in kind, anybody can stand in front of that banner and be the, be the I in kind. I did just, that was, it's awesome. It's right in the, it's right on Main Street outside the office, but since you mentioned it, I figured I'd throw it up there. Good idea.
Kelly and I both went to the MASCE Conference, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Conference in Hyannis last, last week?
Friday.
Friday. And do you want to do your, do your spiel about, or should I continue?
No, you go ahead.
So, we both ended up signing up for the exact same workshops, so. There was a workshop hosted by Maple and so they had four school districts who were involved in Project Learn. It's the Massachusetts Association for Project Learning EdTech, right? And so they had Revere, Andover, Milis, and Natick. All come, each had a table and you could kind of migrate from table to table and listen to what they were doing, how they were using EdTech to enhance personalized learning. So that was interesting. And then in the afternoon, I went to a social emotional learning and implementation workshop, which was hosted by SEL for Mass, which apparently has a lot of resources for various social emotional learning initiatives. And so, both of those were very interesting. And then we had a speaker, Derek Gay, who's a consultant around social emotional learning and making schools a kind of inclusive and welcoming for all students. And then the luncheon speaker was the Attorney General, Maura Healy. So that was cool.
Yeah, it was great. And it was nice listening at the Maple Conference, I went to Natick first, sort of a similar school system. And the superintendent talked about, everything he talked about, we are doing. So I, it made me feel really good, from the elementary schools like morning meeting and a lot of the project-based learning. And Revere was interesting because they're a district that obviously has an extremely tight budget and they actually, and the school committee chair was there and she was funny, they agreed to fund four, to extra teachers. to fund four extra teachers to take part in this program so they could get some initiative going in their district. And they were sort of funny about how, you know, they asked and she balked and then they finally, I don't know how they swung that, but it was great. It was nice meeting districts that are similar to us and completely different as an urban public. And, but, yeah, the social emotional learning is definitely the buzz.
And the only other comment I had was that the Student Opportunity Act passed in the legislature today, so it'll go to Governor Baker for signature. And he's expected to support it, so we're, that's progress.
Progress is great news. It just, we'll see if it's great news for Duxbury.
Right, exactly.
There's still no numbers out there.
No.
We're all waiting to see what that means.
But it's generally...
It won't be worse.
Yeah, it won't be worse. And it's generally good news for Massachusetts.
It is.
So, I think we can cheer that.
Yep.
Okay. So, we have several discussion items, the first of which is the Memorandum of Understanding Between Duxbury Public Schools and the Police Department. So, I'd like to invite Chief McDonald and our Student Resource Officer, Mike Bolz, to come join us, please.
Yeah, so you all know, I think I'll maybe move down there.
Do you wanna go down there?
You all know Chief McDonald, Chief?
Yes.
He was the deputy and became the chief, so congratulations. We already had a great working relationship, so it really helped with the transition. Some of you might know Mike on the way into meeting, but Nick Jamali, our former SRO, everything I've promoted sergeant, and after a process, he was selected. And it's been great, great to work with him so far and he's continuing the great partnership that we have. Thank you.
Great.
So, we have been working, we work together all the time, but in particular, we've been working on this thing that we call Memorandum of Understanding Between Duxbury Public Schools and the Police Department. And I'm just gonna spend, probably less than five minutes, just giving you some context and then we can go over to questions.
Great.
So...
They can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. So, generally speaking, MOUs between schools and police have been around for some time. I can't speak to the actual date. And the very general purpose of an MOU is to formalize and clarify the working relationship between the schools and police department. I like, I have a feeling that MOUs came to be because there was a lot of, there wasn't clarity, there was some complications maybe between some schools and police departments. I can say that's not the case in Duxbury. It certainly isn't now, I'm not sure if it ever was. But nonetheless, the concept of an MOU helped communities kind of get together better. Our most recent MOU, we've been working under an MOU, was approved in 2010. It's a pretty lean document, you've seen that in your packet. And recently, though, there was a criminal justice reform law that was enacted in April 2018, and I don't have the details of what that all entailed, but one of the things that came out of it was a new model MOU for schools and police departments. And it really was focused mostly on, the change was really focused on the SRO and the role of the SRO and how to integrate that, you know, into a school department. The actual, from the law, it says the purpose of the model MOU is to help schools and police departments formalize and clarify their partnerships as they jointly implement a school resource officer program. So, again, that SRO language, that was kind of the new, specific thing in the model. I'm not gonna walk through this. You have this in your packet and it'll be available for public consumption, but it's organized into, how's my mouth skills, what's that, six, seven, eight? It's organized into eight...
Roman numerals.
Roman numerals, that's what I meant to say. Eight sections, obviously some general background purpose, mission statement, that type of thing. There's a, you know, it's a big new section on roles and responsibilities of both the SRO and of school administrators, right? For example, you know, who's responsible for school discipline and who's responsible for criminal, right? And so, these types of agreements help to clarify kind of what lane that we should all be staying in. There's a big section on information sharing, right? What information comes from us to the police department, what information comes from the police department to the schools, and then data collection and then reporting. And then, there's another section on the SRO, his or herself, and his training and also district training as relates to school safety and security. I've pulled out just a few bullets of what I consider highlights, and the chief and Mike might have a different opinion on this, although we've shared this slide. But here's some things that I think are new and better. And this is super relevant because Mike just came on board, but the MOU outlines a process for selecting the school resource officer. And very importantly, from my seat, it ensures that schools are intimately involved in that process. I think we would've done this anyway in Duxbury, but we just went through a process and we were able to, as a leadership team, have a really, have a lot of input and a big role in Mike's selection. And we like to think we did a good job. So, there you go. But we're grateful for that. But this MOU actually articulates that role. There's very, there's new kind of clear language, in my opinion, about supervision and chain of command, right? Who the SRO is responsible to. There's, we also have in our plan what our cost-sharing agreement is. Right now, in town, we're a 50-50 split. Schools have 50% of the salary, towns have 50% of the salary in the operating budgets. There's some new language integrating the SRO into the district, right? Like, how does the SRO become, you know, part of the school culture? How is he integrated into the day-to-day operations of the building? How does he participate in our training? And in our case, how does he help facilitate training? So, that, there's a big section on that and I think that's really important. And again, our recent history has been that the SRO and the full police department is fully involved in all of our safety training. In fact, they've led it for us, or at least in collaboration for us, the last two or three years. And again, we're grateful for that, but this agreement helps articulate that. Again, clear language about information sharing. And then, I think very importantly, the new agreement really requires the SRO to have a certain level of training and continued professional development. Again, they're going to anyway in Duxbury, but it's nice to have it documented in an agreement. And so, that's really it from my perspective. It's a fairly lengthy document, 11 or 12 pages. I think it's very well done. We took the state's model, basically. We did customize it a little bit, just to make sure that our, their titles were correct and our chain of command articulation was correct, but we effectively took the state's model. So, that's all I have to say. Chief, do you have anything to add or Mike?
No, just to clear that, this did come from the Attorney General's office. We've had significant training in the Criminal Justice Reform Act in service for all the officers, the supervisory staff, the command staff. In essence, the Criminal Justice Reform Act is, it's just, from the juvenile standpoint, it's a way to reduce the exposure to the criminal justice system for juveniles. So, it's very, it's really changed the way we will be interacting with juveniles from the law enforcement perspective. So, I think the fact that this act, this new policy came out and sort of reflects that, that was the importance of changing the MOU this year. So, with the training, it was highly recommended that we take that model from the Attorney General's office and use it. There were sections in that that were mandatory to keep us in compliance with the new act, but there are also many sections where it was very specific to Duxbury that we were able to sort of put in there as a compilation so that, you know, it's longer than the old three pages, it's now 12 pages, but that's a reflection of the new Reform Act.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I don't have questions about this. I just want to say thank you for always.
Working with the schools and welcome.
Thank you.
And the police department in general, I think, has done an incredible job in Duxbury. And I know you've done a lot of mental health training recently and you have staff on board and you have a lot of resources and especially in light of the questions tonight and what's gone on. And I know on social media, sometimes there are disparaging remarks and I'm disappointed in that against the schools and the police. And I just want to thank you for all you do to keep us and our students safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was wondering a bit about the sharing of information, student information. And there's some, under the integrating, Part D, the integrating the SRO, there's an opportunity for parents to, I think it's parents of children who have IEPs, they can elect to share information. Is that requested of parents each year or is it, do parents just, they ask their permission once or how does that system work? Or do we know yet?
Sure.
Sorry, I mean...
I'm not sure I know the answer to that right now.
Okay.
I have to follow up on that.
Okay. Because they make reference about notifying parents and guardians, giving them the opportunity to give the student resource officer access to portions of the IEP or 504 plan. And I just wondered, you know, how regularly that permission would be updated, what, is this new?
I'd imagine it's on request.
Okay.
And maybe, or response to a specific situation.
I think it would be incident-driven.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
Right.
Okay. Great. And then, what are the, there are several references to, well, there's a whole section on complaint resolution. And I wondered what the mechanism would be for students or parents or teachers to, if there were a complaint regarding the student resource officer?
So, I think it references our, the police department's complaint format.
Okay.
We have a very detailed complaint, if there's a complaint against an officer.
Right.
Now, because we're an accredited police department, we follow accreditation standards, so we have very specific rules and regulations regarding employee misconduct.
Right, okay.
So, we have things, early warning systems in place so that, you know, if it's something minor in nature, but one minor thing, maybe one thing, but if you start to see three, four, five, it's a pattern, that it's no longer a minor and we would take it up a notch. But people, anytime in Duxbury, can come to the police department and file a complaint against an officer and it'll be investigated.
Okay.
It can be done telephonically, you know, we can come in person. We do accept anonymous complaints, although those are a lot harder to investigate.
Of course.
But we have a very detailed employee complaint policy in the police department.
Okay. So, maybe for members of the school community, there's a link on our website or something to give feedback around?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I kind of joked about this when I talked about this last week, because people do find a way to complain pretty easily.
Yeah, so I just felt like there should be clear.
I just think, probably, you know, our student handbook probably covers a lot of that as far as communicating, you know, communicating with staff.
Right.
You know, I don't know if we have a, we don't have a specific complaint resolution system built in, but just given the access we give the community, I don't think this is an issue for us, but, well, it's something we should consider if...
Or maybe it's just a sentence that says any issues arising should be taken to the school first.
Yeah.
Rather than the police department first. I mean, I...
And again, we do have some handbook language, I think, that covers that, you know, about kind of chain of command, if you will.
Exactly.
And how to get matters addressed, so...
But given that the, kind of the administration of the program is joint, it should be clear who you go to first and how you progress through the complaint process if there is a complaint. Okay. Great. And I think that was everything. Yes, I think that, those were the only questions. So, thank you very much for all the work you do and all the work that went into this, because I'm sure that that was no small job, so...
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Great.
Okay.
Appreciate it coming.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an application for Community Preservation Act funding from Duxbury Softball. Do you want to come speak, please?
Hi.
Hi. I am Kelly LaVallette. I am the president of Duxbury Youth Softball.
Great.
And I just wanted to share with the school committee the funding request form that we put in with the Community Preservation Act. It was put in formally by Jane Carroll, who was a longtime coach and volunteer for Duxbury Youth Softball. The request was to put four dugouts in at, well, Duxbury has currently two softball fields, which are both on school property.
Right.
The Onion Field is to the left of the turf and the Upper High School is to the right of the turf where JV plays. And then, there's also Train Field, which is right outside the library here, that has a grass infield that they're gonna make into a softball field for us. They're gonna skim the grass for it. So, we've put in a funding request to put dugouts at the junior varsity fields as well as the Train Field, which will improve the look of the field as well as player safety. Right now, they're just kind of metal benches there, which are kind of tilted and kind of kids fall off them and the kids kind of run around and go, there's no specific place for them to do any of their batting warm-ups or anything. So, the proposal was to do two dugouts at the Upper High School field, two dugouts at Train Field, as well as put in an irrigation system at Onion Fields. Because softball fields do have a full dirt infield and with no irrigation, the dry springs, the dry summers, there just dirt flies everywhere, harder to maintain. And there is a water source there, but the water department has never turned it on, so we're gonna get them to, in fact, turn it on. Ask nicely and they say yes. So, we put, Jane Carroll put this proposal in, it's for about $79,000. She put it in October 15th. We met with the CPA on November 1st. And then, we just got back word yesterday that it was approved.
Oh, nice.
So, the, yes, the next steps for them would be the CPA group is gonna present to, I guess, the finance as well as the selectmen, and then, I guess, it's gonna be on the town meeting agenda.
Great.
November 14th.
Okay.
No, sorry, March 14th, sorry.
Okay.
March 14th.
So, it's great. Well, congratulations.
And it's similar to the dugouts that were put in over at Keene Street.
Right.
Last summer, which were put in by Renee Reed as a baseball parent.
Right.
So, they put in six dugouts over there, so we're asking for four for the softball fields.
Okay.
And we also explained to the CPA that the fields are different. Baseball fields and softball fields are different with no raised mound and a dirt infield and stuff, so it's not like we could use those dugouts over on Keene Street for our about 300 girls that play in the spring and the summer. They have to be in the designated softball fields.
Okay.
And we wanted to present to you guys or let you know of it because a lot of the activity is gonna be on school property.
Right.
To the JV field, the JV teams are gonna be able to use those dugouts, hopefully this spring, if not the following, so...
I did want to mention to that point, too, that, correct me if I'm wrong, but I did talk to Brian Cherry and Brian said he met, he and Tom Holgate did meet with some representatives of softball.
Exactly.
And they're all on board.
They all on board. We met them, that was like kind of early in October.
Yeah.
And then, after that meeting, we heard about, you know, we got the information about the CPA, the baseball and how they did it, and then, we just kind of, you know, somewhat cut and paste it from them, but using the same vendors, I know it does need to grow up a bit, but use the same vendors as Duxbury Youth Baseball used as well.
Right. The one question I had was, and it may be trivial, but what are the ongoing kind of maintenance costs for the dugouts and there's a water bill for the irrigation? And will those be handled the same way as, say, the baseball field dugouts and watering? Is it town cost or, because it's on school property, is it gonna be our cost?
There's a letter in here from, again, Jane did a lot of it, but from the water department, from Peter Menken, talking about what the yearly cost is and who that's gonna be billed to. And Duxbury Youth Softball will take, will be able to pay for, you know, this grant will pay for the initial and then, Duxbury Youth Softball will do. It's not tremendous amount, but I believe youth baseball pays for the one over at Chandler.
Right, okay. Okay. Well, as long as there's some clarity, so that, I would hate to have the maintenance not be done because we all are thinking somebody else is gonna take care of it.
Right.
And so, as long as that's all clear, then that's great. And congratulations on the...
Thank you.
On the success of the application.
It's great news.
Okay, perfect. Thanks very much for coming.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Right.
Yeah.
Budgets.
So, do you want me to, can I give you just a...
Yeah, please give us a quick...
Well, I don't really have much. So, a couple of things. First, we do have our leadership team here tonight. I appreciate them coming out another night, just as a sort of backup, if you will, if there's a, you know, a specific question that we couldn't answer that they'd be better suited to answer. Whether there are questions or not, I do appreciate them coming. Since our last meeting, we did have, we did make a presentation to the finance committee. Sorry, Kelly. Kelly got locked out, literally locked out.
Literally locked out.
Which is, yeah.
The door was locked.
It literally isn't.
I put a doorstop in. And there are people in the back, like, eating, but they can't come in.
It was like the closed-door impeachment deficit.
I had pizza and everything.
I was gonna bust in.
So, that night, we did a very, we did a...
I put a doorstop in and there are people in the back like eating, but they can't.
It was like the closed door impeachment.
I had pizza and everything.
So that night, we did a very, we did a modified presentation, you know, much shortened presentation without all the, all the detail really of our full presentation. I have to say, it was a really productive and positive meeting and discussion. And I think it's maybe, you know, it's reflective of the other dialogues we've been having in town too. It's just, it's be, it's become more productive and I, and I certainly appreciate that. And I hope we're doing our part to make that, to make that a reality. I think we are. So that was, that was positive. I do, just a quick update, I did happen to be, I had a meeting today, unrelated topic with Rainey Reed and John Adams, finance director. Nothing's, nothing's official, but I, I just did want to convey at least what I think I heard, which is, you know, we had put forth two budgets, right, budget A, budget B. And budget B would obviously be dependent on the town finding new revenue and likely in the form of a, you know, prop to an F override. That's, it, it appears less and less likely that that's going to happen this year. I still think there's an actual, I don't know, appetite is probably too strong of a word, but I, I do think that that conversation is going to continue. I don't think we're, anybody's ruling that out for the future. But it doesn't seem like it will come to fruition this year. Again, that's, I'm just trying to, nothing's set in stone, but that was, that was sort of the message that I think is being, being delivered.
Why is that? Like, what are the triggers that would, you know, give him or you, you know, the ability to say, oh, this feels like it could happen or not?
I, I actually don't, I actually don't know. Again, this is part of the confusion, not, not confusion, it's part of the issue, the issue is that it's a complicated topic, you know? And so, I don't think anybody has a real handle on how to, how to make it happen. What I do know about next year though, is that there is some, a significant amount of debt falling off the tax rate, which will, in theory, free up money under the, under the levy, right? And so, let's say a million fell off. Might in theory be easier to ask for a million in an override because it really would have a net zero tax impact, right? So that, that's, that's just a factor for it maybe being easier the year after. But beyond that, I don't, I don't know. I still think, you know, and I conveyed this to them today, and this wasn't the purpose of our meeting, it was a very brief conversation. But I still would love to leave the door open for the conversation about larger multi-year override plan, you know, that would just give us some, some breathing room, you know, for the next five years. I just.
Meaning something more ambitious than budget B?
Yeah, well, so, one of the things that we have talked about, and again, this is, this is in some public meetings. We had joint meetings over the past year or so, year or so, was the idea, I'm just throwing out an example where maybe we, maybe we, all, all an override is, is raising the cap, right? It's, it's raising, it's raising, it's called the levy limit, right? So it's, it's, it's giving town, town more room, you know, to tax up to a certain level. So let's say you go after a big number in the vote and you're going to vote a seven and a half million dollar override. And one of the ideas that was floated around is say, what if we did a big number like that, but only spent it?
Like spread the spend out.
Spent it over five years.
Spread the spend over five years.
Yeah, so it might be a million and a half impact one year, a million, right? And so it does a lot, it does a lot of things, right? It, it provides that breathing room and that opportunity for growth for the next X amount of years. I'm using five in this example. And also, but by the end of that five years, you've had the, the bonus of like that compounding, right? So you're almost getting more for your money because by the end of that five year time, your bu, your budgets, you, you know, they're built upon themselves, right? Again, I throw that out there, that it's, it was just an idea that, Julie, you've been there for, I think, some of those discussions about the multi-year plan, but it's complicated. It's really complicated, you know, it's, it's hard to, it's hard to explain to people. There's also a credibility thing, you know, where we wouldn't want to go tell the community that we're going to spend it over five years and then spend it all in one year, right? And so we'd have to all be on the same page and with a well-articulated agreement. But again, I, I don't want to go on the rabbit hole in that, I'm just saying like, I, I want to, I want to make sure that we don't lose the momentum about the future because I've said it over and over again, I'm not worried about next year per se, although I don't like it. I don't want to celebrate budget A because it's really not, it's nothing to celebrate. But I am worried about the future. I think everybody is and that's, we need to keep that dialogue going.
Yeah. I mean, who drive, I mean, maybe there's not an easy answer for this, but who drives the bus with regard, in a town? Who drives the bus with regard to building a ask for a budget override for the school? Is that typically the superintendent's job? Is it school committee? Does Rainey do it? Like, I, that's what I.
I think all of the above, you know, all of the, to make it successful, all of the above.
But someone has to drive.
Actually initiate it.
You know, so someone has to go to, I would think, I mean, I'm new at this, so, I've been here for three years, I keep saying I'm new at this. You know, I'll be old at this, thirty years. But, I mean, doesn't someone have to sort of take the initiative to go to public forums? Go to people's houses, make a case, say like, this is what we're asking for, here's why we're asking for it. This is the value to the community, community. So I'm just kind of wondering, like, what's the holdup for that? Or should there be, I mean, like, is there some sort of underlying strategy that's preventing us from doing that now? Or preventing the person who would typically drive the bus to do that? Do you know what I mean? Because if I didn't know any better, I'd feel like we're sort of, there, there's discussion around, like, this isn't the time to do it. And maybe that's fine, but why isn't this the time to do it? Who, when it is time to do it, who does it? Do you know what I mean? Does that make sense? Am I making sense in asking these questions?
Yeah.
You're making perfect sense.
Yeah, Matt, so I can only, to you guys, like the sixty-four thousand dollar question, I mean, you know, I can only speak from experience when it says. But I, we, we would be happy to take, take the lead, right? And in many respects, we have to take the lead.
Yeah.
On our drive, right, because we, we're the biggest, you know, we're the biggest department in town. We have access to, I think, the most kind of impassioned voters, right? Our, our consumers are very passionate about their, their product. But in order for us to go down that path, I think the rest of the town has to be ready. You know, I think the selectmen have to be ready, I think the finance committee has to be, I think we have to be ready. And I just, I, I, again, I'm trying to just read the tea leaves, but I don't think we're there yet.
So this is based on, this is based on discussions with the town manager and the selectmen and the finance committee. You're just not getting the feel.
I'm just listening to what you're, you're all listening to. I mean, I could be totally wrong. I'm not, I'm not in that many meetings where you guys aren't. I mean, so it's.
Yeah.
Well, also, there, there, there are mixed opinions amongst the selectmen evidently. And so, and they're elected officials, so one assumes that they're somewhat responding to voter sentiment. We're elected officials and we've heard diddly squat from families about budget A or budget B, right? There's been no correspondence at all. So, so at this point, it's very difficult to say that the town, that there is a groundswell of opinion backing anything other than budget A.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a fair point. I mean, maybe it's incumbent on us as school committee though to, you know, I'm not saying canvas the whole town, but first of all, let me say, I think there's shared responsibility. There's shared responsibility in the community writ large. There's parental community, you know, and, and, you know, regular people in the town who have the responsibility to, for example, come to these meetings, go on the website, understand what the budget is, have an opinion about the budget and then make some, make their opinions known. It's no secret, no one ever comes to these meetings except for the leadership team, except for these guys, right?
And they're forced to.
Yeah, well, you're forced to, and I, but that doesn't mean that I don't congratulate you on coming. But on the other hand, sometimes that sort of dialogue needs to start from the other side, the other party, you know?
Right.
So maybe there's an opportunity for us on the school committee even to, you know, just start to drive like a narrative. Maybe it's just like an information campaign, just to say like, in case you missed it, you know, this is where we're headed this year. You deserve to have insight into what these two, you know, hypothetical budgets look like and we'd love to just get your feedback. Because it's one thing to say like, we're not hearing diddly poop from the community, that's true, but, you know, we're not, you know, we're not necessarily, yeah, I don't think we're necessarily doing a wonderful job of, you know, proactively going out and advertising what that budget is. And maybe that's not our job.
I think it should be our job, I just don't know, like, when, when you go out and sell it, you need to know what you're selling.
Well, no, I didn't say sell it. Not that I intentionally didn't say sell it. I said just in, just inform.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you know what I mean? Like, it gets back to sort of like the website. I went on the website again, right? And so, you know, it's not really wonderfully put together on how to like even figure out when these meetings are, where to get the minutes and something, I'm just telling you. I mean, I've done this my whole career, so, you know, you have some stuff from me, I know, and that's not even perfect. But I think we could probably do a better job as a body to, you know, just to, to communicate and make this information more easily accessible. And we could, and still we may not hear anything, I don't know, but I just kind of feel like there's, there's like some inertia right now around.
Matt, I will say though, and I don't want to sound defensive when I say this, you'd be hard pressed to find another district that communicates as much and I think with some clarity, especially around budget as we do. And I'm not, I'm always saying this again, like, our, our documents, our presentation, we are pushing it out. Like, I just know it doesn't happen everywhere. And I don't know, and again, maybe, maybe we could do better, I, I just don't know what it's going to take, right?
Oh, it'll never be good enough.
Right, until people.
I mean, that's the, that's the, that's the rule of communication, John.
Yeah.
It's never good enough.
Right.
And I believe you, we're probably better than Marshfield and Situate and all the other, you know, districts. But, I mean, I'm just here to tell you that, like, you can communicate your ass off. It's never going to be enough communication.
Right.
So, you know, I, I, I'm not like, you know, I don't think that this is, I'm not trying to raise any sort of alarm bell, but I would hate to be here in another year just saying, saying to each other, well, it just kind of doesn't feel like from the selectmen and stuff or the community that anyone really cares. Because as we get closer to town meeting, that's when everyone does seem to care. So to me, that's the evidence that people have an opinion. And it's, I'm not, and again, I'm not like blaming anyone or any particular, you know, team. I have a feeling like this is more concerning to people than they're letting on. I think that it's worth discussing, maybe not tonight, how we can more proactively just, you know, inform the, the direction that we're headed in with the budget, that's all. Like, you know what I mean? Like, if we had, you know, just to sort of make it visual, if there were like, if this were the old days and like, I got up on a stage and everyone in the town was there and we were gonna, you know, you know, have a contest on how much the dead cow weighs or whatever. And I was trying, I would just say, hey, just so you guys know, since I all have you here, you know what I mean? Like, this is what we're budgeting the schools for next year. We have another sort of hypothetical one and you deserve to sort of know about it, here's kind of the, the deal. And I know we're doing that, maybe we're doing it enough, but I just, it just, something doesn't feel like right to me, I don't know why.
I have a couple of thoughts. My first is what the heck did you eat for dinner?
Why? Oh, you mean like this?
A cow.
Oh, oh, sorry, yeah.
So I was really involved the last couple of years in the budget and disseminating information. And I went to PTA meetings and we had, you know, coffees with principal, whatever. We made a presence, Julie and I, we went around, we talked to parents and there's literally a core group of parents who get involved and they try to rally the other parents and it is a very small group. And I think this year from the get-go, John, you've said a couple of times, we are not going to take the lead on this, this year. Like, we are not taking the lead on two and a half this year. We kind of made that perfectly clear. That aside, I mean, our budget information is incredible. And I will say to people, you know, they're like, thanks for all you did for the schools or if there's an issue that comes up, but did you read the budget? And they're like, nah.
Yeah.
You know, or, or it'll be what's happening with the budget, right? Because we're the go-to people and I totally get that, that's fine. You know, so, but when you say to people, do you realize that we're having more cuts? Do you realize we're, you know, it's a couple of teachers down? Oh, you know, and then it's sort of, they all get excited for town meeting, but by then it's a little bit too late. I don't know, I think it's going to be like it was when my twenty-year-old entered school and it was, you know, don't get rid of Spanish and save our Spanish and fighting program against program and there were a lot of cuts. I think it's, we're going to have to get to the point where people really feel that impact. You know, your, your, a couple of shingles came off and your roof might be leaking a little bit, but you're not going to re-roof your house this year because you don't have the money. So until we get the next nor'easter and your roof gets ripped off, that's when you're going to really worry about re-roofing your house. It's the same thing with the schools, because an override is a lot of money. And it's not just for the schools, it's for the whole town. So everybody has to be on board and there's an enormous responsibility on the schools because we are the biggest chunk of the town budget. But I, I don't know, I think we do a great job and I think we put ourselves out there. And, you know, Julie and I are happy to go to more coffees or whatever, but it's the same cast of characters. And I, I don't know what the answer is to try to involve more parents.
Well, and I also.
And I'm not trying, I mean, I mean, that's the reality of it.
Yeah, no, and I'm not, you know, and again, I'm not the one going to the coffee, so, and, you know, it's, it sounds really strange coming, you know, me, me, me saying it. But it's just like, as I kind of reflect on last year, John, I remember you doing a really good job of saying like, look, you know, there, eventually you start to get to this period of erosion, things then start to, you know, and to me, I looked, I looked at that as a warning, something to be wary of. So maybe a lot of what I'm saying is coming from that. Like, how many warning years do we have before all of a sudden we've got a?
Yeah.
But now it's, it's, it's really important and, you know, will we, will we be sort of too late? Do you know what I mean?
So it's interesting, I, how do I say this? Like, I, because I don't want to sound satisfied with where we are right now.
Yeah.
Not that I want to be negative, I just don't want to be satisfied where we are. But you have to think back to where we've come in the last two years, in three years, with the discussion in town. Like, I, I think there's been amazing progress. I mean, the fact that we're even talking about a proposition to an F override in Duxbury is a sign of tremendous progress to me. And it's a sign that we've made progress with educating the community. It's a sign that we're doing a, I think, a far better job establishing positive working relationships with town boards and town officials. Because I will tell you, I mean, my first year here, second year here, like, that, that, that would have been a third rail of conversation. I don't know if you guys agree with me on that, I'm just saying like, and so I, I don't, again, I don't want to be satisfied that we're still in this kind of limbo.
Yeah.
But we're having real meaningful dialogue about the future and that to me is a huge sign of progress.
That's, you just, you just gave me the answer I was looking for ten minutes ago.
Yeah.
Yeah, I trust you. If you feel like we're making progress and this is part of that progression, then I'm cool with that. I just wanted to sort of get a gut check on whether we're heading in the right direction to eventually get to a place where we're not feeling like there's a, you know, there, there's a, an end game where we don't have enough resources to be able to serve the kids.
Yeah, I think at some point though, we have to, to your point, we have to get out of limbo, right? And whether it's us, you know, just deciding to go to the selectmen or go to finance committee with a proposal for an actual override budget, like, that, I don't, I don't, I really don't think it's this year. But it's, you know, that, that might have to be from us. Right? And you, you hope you're building a foundation of discussion and dialogue now to, to make that, you know, a possibility. And I think the town would be happy with that, right? Because, by the way, the town wants to be in on this too, right? The town, you know, police and fire, DPW, they have, they have significant needs too, so we can, we can help each other. But, yeah, well, there you go, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I, I know, you guys might disagree on that, but I, I just, I will tell you, I think the tone is, is better.
Yeah.
And I think there's a recognition.
Yeah, this is part.
That what we're saying isn't, isn't hyperbole.
Right.
You know, that, you're talking about erosion.
So we're all sort of, whereas three years ago, we probably, the whole town probably wasn't rowing in that direction. Now you're feeling like we've got the oars in place and they're having the conversations and everything, so things are starting to kind of move in that direction. That's, that's cool. I think that's great.
I mean, you got to remember, in a community that's not used, used to an override discussion. So the, the, the town, this town has done dead exclusions for buildings, they've done a fabulous job with that, right? But operating budget overrides are, they're, they're rare, they're especially rare in a town like this. I think the last time it happened was.
Nineteen ninety-three.
Nineteen ninety-three, we had an override years ago. So, matter of fact, I'm actually meeting this week with a former school business manager who was here.
Right, Susan.
No, Mickey McGowan, yeah, during that time, just, just to kind of get together. So, it's complicated. But again, so I, one of the other things too, by the way, I want to talk, and I mentioned this, I think, last meeting is, in our dialogue, is, you know, many towns like ours recognize that there's a structural deficit. We have a structural deficit every year. We just can't keep up, right? We don't have any commercial tax base, et cetera. So, we've had this conversation ad nauseam. But, you know, it might, it might be, another solution might be that we do these small, we start developing a culture of doing small overrides every few years just so we don't have to, have to experience that erosion. So, it's those types of things. But it's, again, it's new to this generation of officials and parents. And we'll have to see. But I do think there's progress.
Good, no, that's great. That's, if you, if you feel like there's progress being made, I believe there's progress being made. What do you think?
I agree with you. I think that we're...
You don't have to, I just...
Well, I agree that we're having a more constructive discussion than we've had before. And that's in some part to do with a change of personnel, both in the school department and at the town over the past few years. But I'm looking at the tail of two budgets here. And this budget A, the increase is $846,000. That's what, you know, was being dealt to the school department when I was first joined the school committee four years ago. So, you know, yeah, there's progress in the talking and the discussion, but there's no progress in the money. And you consider that four years ago, our budget was 31 or 32 million. So, an $850,000 increase was that much more compared to the base budget. So, you know, in fact, I'm, I don't consider that we've made any...
Definitely not.
Any kind of factual or financial progress for the department. And so, that's a bore, frankly. And making sure that the needs of the schools are really... Also that are included in any kind of override plans. And not, personally, I'm...
Than a big one that's spread out over like, yeah.
Well, yeah, I think it becomes... To have a discussion every year. What are the town's needs? What are our real needs?
Yeah, I agree.
And then we generate, somehow generate revenue for that, those needs, rather than starting as we have done up till now, starting with, "Well, what does 2.5% give us?" Okay, well, that means the schools get $850,000. Which is the discussion every year.
Well, the other thing that frightens me about a big override is that, and you say this all the time, you know, schools today are so much different than they were 20 years ago. Regulations aren't getting easier, they're getting harder. So, there's always stuff around the corner that you have to spend money on that you don't know about. And I'd hate to do a big override and then feel like, you know, there's no appetite to do anything meaningful until 2050. So, that's why I vote for the, I agree with you. I think smaller incremental that are more based on the reality of what's going to happen next year and stuff like that.
And I think the town has, you know, it's not only the schools. There are various projects that need to be considered, the bridge and the beach and various other things that, over time, the context changes. So, if we're, you know, so far, Dexbury has had one override in 25 years, right? So, we don't, we don't want to, I don't feel like I want to fight for the next 25-year override. You know, there's one override and then there's nothing for 25 years. That would just not be sensible.
Put it on my gravestone.
Right, exactly.
He helps with the override of '22.
So, hence, I go back to wanting to see a strategy.
Yeah.
And the school department is part of that strategy. But I don't think we drive the strategy, frankly. I think the town has to come up with that. And so, I'm looking forward to some leadership from the selectmen on that. We'll see.
I think we just have to be careful to not be having this conversation next year because of inertia around the budget.
Right.
Because I think if we are moving in a direction where the five-year projections are what they are, if the budget is such that it's not going to be this year, we still have to start the work for next year now.
That's right.
Before town meeting. We can't just wait. But I think that, it seems as though the town was waiting for the school committee approval of a budget before anything moved forward this year. So, I think as soon as that happens, we need to make a strategy and a plan. Because we do have some parents, as much as the groups are small, that are asking what they can do. And those are the people that we can engage to start going into the small groups of their friends and just doing that grassroots effort under your lead to be able to kind of educate the people that aren't reading the budget documents and aren't quite aware until town meeting time of what's going on.
Yeah.
I think that that's, that's a good strategy. And I'm happy to chip in and go, you know, talk to people and stuff, and school councils and PTOs and things. But I really feel it has to be, our strategic plan, financial strategic plan, has to be situated within the town's strategic plan. Or else we're, we'll end up in a position of driving the town finances. And that's not really where we want to be.
At our next meeting, we, by statute, we have to actually post a budget hearing. So, we'll post that and, you know, we'll have that on the...
Right.
Agenda again.
We'll vote.
No, we'll vote...
Probably should vote. What's the date?
Is it the 19th?
It's the 4th and the...
Yeah, I guess we could, we could vote, we could vote on that same night. It doesn't, we'll have to, we'll have to see if that's feasible.
So, 4 and 8, December 4th and 18th?
Right. Okay. Any other thoughts? Okay.
Did I overstep?
No, never. Right, we have two action items. And all our lovely administrators who've waited patiently for us to ask you questions, you may now go. Thank you ever so much. I'm sorry to have kept you. So, we need to vote the capital budget. And then the superintendent's contract. So, the capital budget is... This, right? This is the one?
Yep. Just process thing, you know, process, as far as the process goes with our capital budget, we, we are, we would ask you to vote our capital budget as presented by Katie. And then, you know, the town administrator makes his recommendation on which items to fund. And then it runs through fiscal advisory and then ultimately finance committee. And I'm not really sure where it goes after that. But, so, we're in that process. I know town administrator is 100% supportive of our... Actually, with one exception, I think, on his recommendations. But we, very, at this point, it's looking like he's extremely supportive of our capital budget requests, which we appreciate, yeah.
And then you'll have an, you and Katie will have an opportunity to present or discuss with fiscal advisory?
We haven't, so, we met, well, actually, Katie, we met yesterday with a representative of fiscal advisory. Katie spent most, I had to step out. But I'm not sure, last year, we actually had a, it was a night. You know, where we presented. So, I haven't heard anything about that yet.
Because I think there was a joint meeting where different departments presented all the capital budget.
Capital once, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, we'll see, we'll stay tuned on that. But we just wanted to kind of like lock in our number. It's out there anyway, but just figured from a process tempo, we should vote it.
Okay. So, any issues or things you want to bring up?
So, is this for the 345094?
Exactly.
And, but didn't you say that he had an issue with one of the items?
Well, not even really an issue if it's, I don't, they separate, I actually don't, I didn't actually see the recommendations, but they separate things into what they go capital and then capital light.
Right, yeah.
And...
I think your Kubota is the capital light.
No, no, that's going to, no, that's in the capital.
Oh, right.
That's in the regular. I think there was one, and I don't know which one I said, there was one capital light request that, for some reason, didn't make their recommendation. I'll look more into that.
Oh, but it's still, but it doesn't affect the bottom line?
No, no, it doesn't affect our bottom. Like, what gets funded likely will likely be different from our recommendation. But I think it's important for us to say like, "This is our request."
Yeah, okay, got it.
Okay. So, could I have a motion to approve the capital, fiscal 21 capital budget request of totaling $345,094?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. She's there.
She's right with us.
Yeah.
Okay, great. And then the other item is the superintendent's contract, which we have all reviewed. So, may I have a motion to approve the superintendent's contract entitled the 2019 to 2023 employment contract for Dr. Antonucci?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thanks, good to be back.
Welcome aboard. Okay, so you and I will sign these after the meeting. Okay, great. Opportunity for public comment? Ladies? Okay, great. Thank you, everybody, for coming. And so, motion to...
Do you want to say something?
No, I just, can I say something?
Of course, yeah, yeah.
Yeah? I don't know if it's relevant.
If you're saying it, it's relevant.
Well, you were talking about the budgets and, I know, like, a couple of years ago, you came out to PTO meetings and you've done an amazing job as far as all the information. But I was here two weeks ago and I still, now I can't really remember exactly what the difference is between A and B. Because you step away and whatever. And it's almost like you need a Cliff Note. Does that make sense? Because you guys are really involved in it day in, day out. And when people are in and out, it's hard. Like, when you talk about an override, I have no idea what the override would be at this point and what the expectation, what the benefit and what are we getting as far as the parent.
Right.
You know, that's just kind of like as a, you know, just because I am here. And I'm still, I'm like, "Oh, what were we, you know, what is, what is, what is each one doing?" So, I guess that, when you, just to your point, when you were talking about getting people behind it and stuff like that. Like, I feel like last year, a lot of people got involved even because in the middle school, the math, where you were down teacher, it was, the math classrooms were really, when you talk about shingles, there were a lot of shingles fell off because all of a sudden, there was a lot of kids stuffed into math classes. And I know that we kind of sorted that out for this year. So, people aren't as cognizant of it. So, I guess just in the future, I just feel like it almost has to be for people that are kind of jumping in and jumping out, just a little bit more, almost marketed better. But just the Cliff Notes, that's all I guess I was trying to...
No, I know, I know what you're saying. And I don't think you or I are disparaging the communication at all.
No.
That's not how, but I get what you're saying. You know, like, and I always use the same analogy. Like, I come from business. And, you know, one of the things I was responsible for for many, many years was like, we had really, one of the companies I worked for just had really complex products, technology products. And they broke a lot. And like, the salespeople were all up in arms about it. And I had to constantly go to like the sales force and tell them what was going on with Sam. That was product Sam. Like, "Here's what's going on, blah, blah, blah." And it was never enough. But I'm telling you right now, like, I got like two hours of sleep a night. Like, I was always trying to figure out ways to better communicate. And the one thing, the one mantra that I walked away with is like, "Is it impossible to over-communicate?" And I think what you're saying is like, I think, one, and I'm happy to work on you guys with this, because these guys have enough to do. It's like, what does this mean for me? What does this mean for me as a parent?
As a parent.
You know what I mean? What does this mean for me as a parent? And it's not saying like the other stuff that are on the line items are not important, they are important.
Right, but how to translate.
But here, like, one way to do it is just like, "Here's what we feel really good about. Here's what we're really nervous about. Here's what you should be, feel good about. Here's what you should be nervous about. And here are some of our, you know, this is some of the things that we're planning on doing." Do you know what I mean? And I think that's kind of what you're looking for.
Yeah. Or just, I guess, yeah, because it's just, I just maybe realized when I came here tonight, you know, I went through the whole thing and I had a real grasp on it last week. But I, you know, now I've gone on and done a zillion different things and I walked back in and I was like, "Ooh."
Yeah. But the overcrowding thing was tangible. You know, the math, the math thing in the middle school was tangible. You could, you could see it.
Yes.
You know, you could see your kid in there with like 30 other kids and blah, 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 and it became emotional. You could see it, you know, you could see your kid in there with like 30 other kids and blah, 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 and it became emotional, and that's why we saw so much sort of back and forth.
If I can just say too, if we're going to, if we have people asking us how they can help, and the people that are here engaged can't even explain how they can help, I think that's the problem. So I think if we're going to start to do some work on the ground with some of the just messengers of what the real budget needs of the school district are, we need to just really make a simple, like, what you need to know in order to answer any simple questions about the school budget and where we stand. And I think that that's kind of the next step. We can't do that yet, because we don't even have a recommended budget yet.
Right.
But I think the next stage after that is just going to be, when we're going to the PTOs, you can't remember to, you can't remember everything in this entire presentation, so what are the biggest takeaways that you need to be able to have, and whether we create something, and I don't think it comes from the school department, I think it comes from the foot soldiers of what are those, what are those important bits of information that we can share accurately, so there's not misinformation being shared, and I think that's the next stage, and it makes sense that you'd need a refresher even just coming to the meeting, because there's so many details.
And the one other thing, just from being in two different school systems, and it was across the board, no matter where, when you're going to ask for more, I feel that people may be more in the finance committee or people that aren't involved with the schools, there's always the comment, well, they already have so much. And one of the things I feel like, coming from a business side, where if I had a $20 million budget and I had wanted more, because I was a buyer, so I always wanted more, that $20 million budget had to be pristine.
Yeah.
If that makes sense. And sometimes going back and talking about, and I'm sure we do this, but I guess I just was thinking about it, talking about and making sure what we have and what we're spending is pristine, if that makes sense.
And that's where I think we, like, just to, you know, to, not to speak for these guys, they can do that, that's what I think they're awesome at.
Yeah.
I can tell, like, there is no, there is not one cent that is like misspent in this school. I can tell, you know what I mean? Because I've just worked with so many, from a business side, with so many other superintendents, so many school districts, and the budgets are a mess.
Right.
But this one is airtight, like, airtight, and I think that's a great platform to start the communication from.
Right.
You know what I mean?
And it may have been before, John, but we never saw it like that.
Yeah.
Like, every single iteration, and this is Chandler, and this is, you know, I mean, it's, there, there's no stone unturned.
Great, thanks very much.
Oh, we have one more. Two for two.
I understand that those communications can't come from the administration, but as elected officials, could they come from you guys? Could it come, could some communication, like you were talking about, come from the school committee directly to the parent community? Or to the community, I'm not real clear.
Let me just clarify something, though, so we can send anything out in an override campaign. Again, we're talking about, like, we're kind of in limbo here, right? But this year, our budget is, it is what it is, right? If we're going to go, this budget is, nothing really to, I think, overly communicate this year. But in an override campaign, we can't, we can't.
Right.
We can't use public resources to campaign.
Can the school committee?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that was the clarification I was looking for.
But I would think we would want to start over-communicating this year.
Well, I think, I think what we need to figure out is what are we going to communicate in anticipation for next year?
Right.
Right, yeah.
But I think once we vote our budget, you know, we can put together a cheat sheet and start showing up at meetings or whatever. Somebody calls us and say, I'm going to have 15 people for coffee, can you come?
Yes, and I think that-
Just this is, this is the highlights of this.
Yeah, but I think there's more to it than just this, because there is a longer-term view about where you want to take the district and what's involved, and I think that that also needs to be put into context.
And the town's-
Not only what we're not getting this year, because there's not an override, but what we might not be getting next year and year after.
Yeah, I think we're talking about two different things. So I think one thing that we can do, I can do better, starting now, is to just have frank conversations with community members around what we're, you know, quite frankly, like, what we're nervous about, and what we feel parents should be concerned about as it relates to the structural deficit stuff that John talks about a lot, you know what I mean? So here's the stuff, it's not like crisis mode, but these are the things that we think about, and you should think about, you know what I mean? And as part of that conversation, then you can start to say, I think, things like, now, there's a lot of other things structurally under the hood that are going to need maintenance, it's not for this conversation, but I want to make you aware of sort of just the tone of it now, because in a year or so, we need to start to work together as a community to speak with one voice around, you know, approving a more ambitious override that gets us really where we need to be as a district. So I think it's kind of like two things, it's like the non-override sort of like, you know, this is, these are the things that, you know, we're planning for this year. We're not like thrilled about certain things, other things we are really feeling good about, you should too, or whatever, love to hear feedback. But then also, you know, we should just start sort of planting the seeds for some preparedness around that bigger, bigger ask.
Yeah.
And I think you can talk about the need for that without getting like super specific about like those things.
And I think some of that conversation too can lead to the strategic plan.
Right.
So if you look at the strategic plan and what the district wants to do in the upcoming years, there's certainly financial impacts to a lot of the different initiatives, so, and we're, we just have to be aware that it's going to, it may cost us in excess of a 2.25% or 2.5% increase. So certainly, the vision going forward, it's not going to, the 2.5 is probably not going to cover it.
No.
We're not even getting the 2.5.
And the whole town's in the same boat. What, just one last comment I want to make about the communications. I think a school does a great job, and ever since I found out you were checking to see who opens their newsletter, in the moment that sucker comes in, I rush in the open, but I always read it anyway, but I didn't always read it immediately. Anyway, I think that, and you guys send a lot of things out, and I try to keep up with that, and I think you do a great job. I would say that some new modes of communications, it would definitely get my attention if I got more, got push notifications, push communications from the school committee, because we don't hear directly from the school committee. So that might be a way to get people's attention, and I don't know if there are other modes too. I know the poll communication's so hard, people are busy, they don't come to the PTA meetings, I mean, they don't come tonight, whatever, but I don't know if there are some creative ways-
I think we'd have to, I think you're right, and I also think we have to be more thoughtful about what we would put out, because you've raised this before. We've got to be careful about, you know, laws, we can't, like, I can't give like my opinion and stuff without these guys, and, you know, and there's quorum stuff, and, do you know what I mean?
Absolutely, yes.
That's the purpose of these meetings, so.
Yeah.
I agree with you, and we just have to be pretty thoughtful and think about what we put out there, you know what I mean?
Absolutely, and I, like, I'm thrilled with budget A for exactly the reasons you guys were talking about, and what you commented about too, about how in the past, it might have been a pretty tight budget, but you didn't know, and certainly the town didn't, wasn't clear about that. Now it's clear, the budget is very transparent, and it looks pretty darn tight to me. And I think that is represented by the reaction from the finance committee the other night. I was thinking as we went into that meeting, I don't know how long this is going to be, because it's so transparent that there just weren't a lot of places to ask questions, so it was really, kudos to you for doing that, it's really, and I think the document is fantastic. It's just fantastic, but anyway, so I'm happy with budget, that budget A is laying that foundation that everybody feels good about just trust and clarity about where everybody is. I don't, I agree, it doesn't move the school forward, and I made my, some of my concerns known last year too. I mean, I have major concerns about STEM, particularly in the area of computer science and computational, not just computer science, but also computational thinking and that kind of thing, and so, you know, I have a vested interest in moving that conversation forward, and that takes money. So I'm concerned about that myself, and I am not forced to come to these meetings. I come of my own volition.
We appreciate it.
Anyway, so thank you to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. Thanks, Shannon.